And, the clerk, please call the roll for the public hearing.
His honor, the mayor.
Here.
Counselor Enright.
Here.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Todd.
Here.
Counselor Walker.
Here.
Counselor Barlow.
Here.
Counselor Van Buren.
Here.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Here.
All present, your honor.
Thank you. This is regarding the proposed local law number five of the year 2015. It's a local law amending local law number two of the year 2003, now chapter forty-four, reapportionment of the code of the city of Oswego, New York with respect to official map and specific boundaries of the city wardens. As of this moment, no one has signed up to address the assembly. Is there anyone out there who'd like to make any comments regarding proposed local law? All right, well, if there's no comments, then can I have a motion to adjourn? Counselor Todd and Counselor Enright, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Adjourn the public hearing. The regular session will begin at seven thirty. Thank you. The counselors, please take their seats. Counselor Barlow.
Do we lose John Williams for minus one?
Counselor Barlow. Welcome to the public session. We do have several people who would like to address the council meeting. The first one, what I ask is when you come up, please state your name, your address, and try to keep your comments to within five minutes. First one is Jeff Gordon. Can you hear Mr. Gordon?
My name is Jeff Gordon. I live at 107 Murray Street in Oswego, New York. I've been a resident of the city for fifty-seven years. I was here two weeks ago because when I retired from the fire department where I worked for twenty-nine and a half years, there was a discrepancy, I believe there's a discrepancy in my accrual payout. Since August of last year is when I retired, right from the start, I requested meetings. They, you know, they wouldn't, the city wouldn't give me a meeting. This has been going on. The, my ex-union sat down with them. They said that I couldn't, the city said that I couldn't be at this meeting, and I'm the guy that, you know, I'm trying to explain why I believe they owe me money. You know, I requested two weeks ago to sit down with somebody. I, I wanted somebody to answer. I called the mayor's office Friday. They were gonna call me back. No one called me back. I wanna know why I can't have a meeting. All the parties that are involved in this are here tonight. I can go home and get my paperwork, and we can have this meeting tonight if you want. But I gotta have a meeting to explain what's going on, and if they, if the city can explain to me why they don't owe me money versus why I can explain why they do owe me money, then I'll leave everything alone. I, I just wanna know why I can't get a meeting. That's all I'm looking for, is a meeting to sit down, to explain my plight versus what they, what the city believes is right or wrong. So, that's really why I'm here. If somebody can answer the question, why I can't get a meeting, that would be, well, I'm not gonna go away. This is not gonna go away, and I don't know what else I gotta do, but eventually, you gotta give me a meeting. I mean, you got paperwork in the, in this, where you pay your tax bills that says, any John Q. Public can go and request a meet with department heads. I've requested. I hired a lawyer. I spent $500 to get absolutely nowhere farther than I got today. So, you know, whether the city attorney can tell me why I can't get a meeting, or any one of the department heads that's sitting over here to my left, or the mayor, that's all I'm looking for. I've been here forever, you know, I'm not going away. I mean, if I gotta come back in two weeks, I'll do this again, just bring little bits and pieces of what happened and what transpired into my situation. I mean, can anybody give me a reason why I can't have a meeting?
Hi, Dan.
Okay. City Attorney?
Um, Gordon, if I've been turning, turning, a lot of these meetings have had been informed by double meetings, and then, after the first non-departmental, and I talked to the first non-departmental, and made it possible, and sent this attorney, the details of it, explaining exactly how we're doing, the current methods, and asked the attorney to, with lots of people that, to be different from that, and how it's gonna be different, and whether it's based on, and, and that, and that, and that, and that.
As of right now, I don't have an attorney. I'm the one that has, you know, in order to get my attorney up to speed where I'm at, would take me four hours of billable hours, and I'm not gonna spend another $500. I mean, the, the department heads that I'm trying to deal with know exactly what I'm trying to say, and they know exactly what I'm trying to get accomplished here, and for some reason, you just won't give me the, the time of day to sit down with these people. I don't, I don't understand why, when you have a sign in the, in the, in the city cashier's office that says you can request a meeting with a department head. Like I said, we're all here tonight. I, I got no problem sticking around and trying to get this resolved, and if any of you counselors want to hear what I have to say, you know, you might think twice about it, but, you know, their response was, that's the way they do it. So if you do something wrong for thirty years, and somebody catches you on it, does that make it okay to keep doing it that way? I mean, it doesn't make sense. I mean, if it was your retirement, you know, it's not a lot of money. It's only about $1,800, but, you know, if I gotta spend it all to get nothing just to prove a point, I guess that's what I gotta do, but I'm requesting a meeting. I mean, that's, that's the bottom line. I have no lawyer. I'm here as Jeff Gordon, John Q. Public. I just wanna, I wanna sit down and explain to them why I think they owe me this money, and I have some real good points that, and real good questions to ask, and that's, you know, our whole, our whole contract is based on a forty-hour work week, and here they, they pay me thirty-two hours for a vacation, which I could've used my vacations instead of sick days, but I didn't, because they said it all was the same. So whether it's five eight-hour days, or, I never worked an eight-hour day. My, my whole career, I worked two ten-hour days, two fourteen-hour nights. Some weeks I worked forty-eight hours, some weeks I worked thirty-eight hours, or thirty-four hours, but the contract is based, and it says in Article nineteen-one, I believe, that our, our, our hours are based on a forty-hour work week unless changed by a state legislative action. I know of no state legislative action. It's still in the contract, that I, you know, I negotiated contracts for twenty-five years with Chief La Croby on this side of the table, now he's on that side of the table, but I just want a meeting to sit down and explain why I believe you owe me money. It's, it's that simple. So, I mean, can I get a meeting?
I, Jeff, I'll call you tomorrow. I don't have a problem.
See, I've heard that, too. Nobody seems to wanna call me.
Well, in advice of counsel, they say that there's no purpose, there's no, it's not.
But there is a purpose.
Well, I'm willing to, I'm willing to.
I'm just saying, if you sit down with me, you're gonna understand where I'm coming from, but to just to keep denying me, it's almost like you're running scared or something. You know, they forced me into paying a lawyer $500, and then they just blew him off, too. You know, the, the points were made, everybody knows why I'm, why I'm complaining about this. It's not like it's a big secret and I gotta rewrite the, you know, rewrite my letters, but I got letters, I got all sorts of information here, and I just, I, I really would hope I could get a meeting, period. I mean, it's really that simple.
I will call you.
We're all here right now.
Jeff, I will call you and we'll set up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is, is Steve Phillips. Mr. Phillips.
Good evening. Steve Phillips, fifty-three West Etica Street. Here to talk about the noise variance for Spencer's Alley. The first thing I'd like to say is that for the past two weeks, we've had no problems, and we certainly appreciate any consideration that Mr. McGrath has taken to alleviate the problems that we were having in the past. I can't speak for the whole neighborhood, but the way the variance is proposed, I don't have a problem with, with the understanding, as explained by the city attorney, that if there becomes a problem, it, and it, and it results in anonymous complaint, that then the decimal level is read at the property line of the bar. I am hopeful that since there has been no problems in the last two weeks, that we're gonna continue with that, and as long as we have that understanding that, because there was some discussion about where do we read the decimal levels, whether it's at the bar or whether it's at the property line of where the complaint comes from, if as long as we understand that if there is an anonymous complaint, and unfortunately, the way the variance is written, it forces most complaints to be anonymous, then it would be at the front door of the bar. But again, I am hopeful that there will be no complaints, because the last two weekends have been complaint-free. So that's it. Thank you.
The speaker is Greg Mills.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. I just wanted to come before you as the Greater Oswego Fulton Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, and last week I wore a nice bright green shirt, and I wasn't able to talk because I had to go home, and I didn't get home tonight to put the green shirt on, so you probably recognize me wearing this tie now, but the bright green shirt recommend, or recognized an event that took place, which was the community cleanup. This community cleanup started as a conversation between a couple folks about some papers that were on the street, and how can we help do cleanup, and then help our city, and help our DPW. After a conversation with Commissioner Smith and a couple other people, we had over sixty people show up on May seventeenth, Sunday, at the Chamber of Commerce to join together to take pride in our community and make a difference in how our community appears, not only to the people that live here, but to the people that visit here. That initiative has spawned into what is gonna become an ongoing event where people will have the opportunity to come together and share their energy, their enthusiasm, their interest in helping our city be clean, and we know that there are a number of things that need to be taken care of in our city, like potholes. Those are the things the DPW can focus on, and what we can help focus on are picking up things on the street, helping to paint branches, helping to take care of our city in a way that the community can be proud of and its residents can be proud of. So I was very happy to be a part of that, and very happy to be a part of something that I think is gonna grow and continue to move forward in helping to clean up our community. And if you come again, maybe I'll have the lime green shirt, and I can share some of those with some of you folks if you wanna help clean up. They're very bright, they're very protective, and very helpful. My next thing I wanted to share with you is Farmer's Market begins on Thursday, and this is, again, a celebration of our community to bring together people in our downtown on Thursday night beginning at four-thirty, to have vendors, farmers, bringing their produce and their products to share with our community, and we are starting something a little bit different this year, where we'll have themes. Our themes will center around entertainment and ethnic groups, physical wellness and well health, well-being, safety with our police and our fire department, as well as paying attention to the literacy issues that we have in our community with partners that we'll be joining with. So I hopefully invite, or hopefully we'll see all of you there and invite you all to join us beginning Thursday night and going through October eighth at Farmer's Market. Last but not least, I just wanna say a great big thank you to the city, the council, for supporting the Chamber events and the events that the Chamber supports through the funding that you provide to make those events successful, and help us to bring a value to our community through these events, and I really appreciate you, and appreciate the effort that you've made to help bring those events to their fruition, and Thursday we'll see the beginning of those. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Is there anyone else who would like to make any comments?
Just to keep the conversation a little light here tonight, in case anybody's wondering, this is the National Geographic. If you can't read, you should take a look at this. The pictures are wonderful in here. Okay? You can't save Detroit, you gotta be Detroit. I'm giving examples here of what they've done. If any of you don't know what's going on in Detroit, huh, take a look at some slums, yeah, in a bankrupt city that's coming back. Okay? Now, we talked, I think Connie Cosimeno talked about not trying to give away houses here in this city when they were dilapidated and didn't wanna just hand them away. Well, one example here from Detroit was this couple that had a $150,000 house they wanted to buy in Hong Kong, but they changed their mind and went to Detroit and bought this $8,600 house that had been abused, windows and appliances missing, wiring, pipes ripped out, oak floors sodden with trash and rotting food. Okay? They're trying to improve the city. Entrepreneurs, I think they call it here, don't they? The last house this one particular person bought for was $5,000. Now, you know, if any of you've ever seen Detroit in the past five years, it's a mess. It's worse than Berlin and Dresden. It's been bombed out, literally. Okay, I don't know if they'll be able to get a loan. They scraped up $45,000 to open a restaurant. Okay? Able to buy, this one guy, he buys 1,350 city-owned properties plus 150 others scattered over a one-square-mile area, a Lower East Side. The reason why I'm bringing this up is that we have negative people in this town who think this city is in bad shape, but boy, all you have to do is just go outside the county a little bit. Okay. Now, I'm gonna keep moving ahead here, 'cause I'm just trying to keep you guys informed here. You know, you can get a, you can get this thing, this National Geographic, it's easy. I got it real easy. Okay, this fifty-four-year-old Pakistani, now Mayor Tom, I'm gonna try and pronounce his name properly, Farooqi, okay? Now, top executive of multinational Cargill. Okay, I, I forgot what they were, but it's something big. And his, his Australian partner bought 150 homes to refurbish and rent. Now, these guys are really throwing the money around. I don't know how Detroit's pulling this off. I'm trying to figure out how come we can't do something like that, 'cause Detroit was definitely in the gutter. Definitely in the gutter. Now, there was something else that I wanted to get into here. There was a business thing here that they mentioned. Oh, he saw that, this particular gentleman bought us $10,000 new economic initiative grant. To his amazement, he is one of thirty winners of this. Now, I hope that this little city can get some business initiatives, and I know who I'm gonna get into here right now, Mr. Tredwell, but we'll leave him alone, and we'll see if we can find somebody else to help the poor city of Oswego out, okay? Thank you very much. Mayor Tom, as usual, you've been so cooperative with me, I have no problem with you.
Thank you, Miles. It's always a pleasure. Okay, if there's no other comments to be made, I would like to call this regular meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, nation, God, visible, liberty, justice. The clerk, please call the roll.
His honor, the mayor.
Here.
Counselor Enright.
Here.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Todd.
Here.
Counselor Walker.
Here.
Counselor Barlow.
Here.
Counselor Van Buren.
Here.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Here.
All present, your honor.
Thank you. Under the mayor's report, I, Greg Mills already took my first item. I wanted to remind everybody again that the Farmer's Market does begin Thursday, March twenty-eighth, four-thirty, eight-thirty along West First Street, so looking forward to it. Wear a green shirt, and I guess that's what we'll all be doing. Also, on Saturday, June sixth, at noon, the Oswego Little League will hold their opening day ceremony in Fort Ontario. So I'll be there. Looking forward to it. Miles, I know you will, too. And also, the Oswego Lions Club will hold their fourth annual craft show at Brightback Park on Sunday, June seventh, from eight in the morning till five. Incredible success. Every year, it just gets better and better. So, it's that time of the year when it becomes a lot of fun to live in Oswego, and the weather holds up, we're gonna have a great summer season. Do the counselors have any comments, reports they'd like to share? Well, seeing none, the clerk, please call Resolution two oh two.
Resolution two zero two would approve the minutes of the common council meeting held May eleventh, 2015.
Counselor Van Buren, Counselor Walker. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes seven zero.
Please call Resolution two zero three.
Resolution two zero three would approve the minutes of special common council meeting held May fourteenth, 2015.
Counselor Enright and Counselor Kaplowitz. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes seven zero.
Please call Resolution two zero four.
Resolution two zero four would appoint Susan Deary, Thomas Drum, and John D. Enright, Commissioner of Deeds.
Counselor Todd and Counselor McLaughlin. Is there any discussion? Counselor Todd.
The only thing I'd ask is, two of these individuals, I believe, are running for office. I think they need these by June second. If we could possibly expedite these for these two individuals, and get them out in the mail as quick as possible, I think they need them by next Tuesday, so.
Can we do that, Ellen? Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes seven zero.
Please call Resolution two zero five.
Resolution two zero five would approve the use of Washington Square Park East Park by the Oswego County Federal Credit Union in order to host a series of movies in the park evenings to be held June twenty-fourth, July fifteenth, and August nineteenth, 2015.
Counselor Walker, Counselor Van Buren. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes seven zero.
Please call Resolution two zero six.
Resolution two zero six would approve the use of city property at the request of Jake Mulkey, chairperson for Oswego Paddle Fest, in order to host their third annual Rock the Locks Paddle Fest event to be held Saturday, July eleventh, 2015, at the yacht club here.
Counselor Todd, Counselor Enright. Any discussion? Counselor Enright.
I just wanna say thanks to Jake Mulkey and the, and the people who organized this, the paddle fest, and I'm glad to see that they're moving it closer to downtown. I hope we get the, you know, people coming into the city and see what we're all about.
Any other comments? Counselor Todd.
Spoke with Counselor Mulkey, or Legislature Mulkey this afternoon. He was very appreciative that this was gonna go through. It's a good event, and he's put it on, for, I think this is the fourth or fifth year now, so Counselor, or Legislature Mulkey's done a good job making sure this goes forward, so.
Yes, he's done a great job. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes seven zero.
Please call Resolution two zero seven.
Resolution two zero seven would approve the use of city property at the request of Thomas Allen in order to host the fourth annual atomic invitational fishing derby to be held August eighth, 2015, at Brightback Park.
Counselor Kaplowitz and Counselor McLaughlin. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes seven zero.
Please call Resolution two zero eight.
Resolution two zero eight would approve the use of city properties at the request of the Oswego YMCA in order to host the Oswego Dragon Boat Festival to be held Saturday, September twelfth, 2015, at Brightback Park.
Counselor Van Buren and Counselor Enright. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes seven zero.
Please call Resolution two zero nine.
Resolution two zero nine would approve storage of sailboats at the International Marina by the Oswego High School Sailing Club.
Counselor Barlow, Counselor Enright. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes seven zero.
Please call Resolution two ten.
Resolution two ten would approve a road closure at the Oswego Head Start Building on Tuesday, June second, 2015.
Counselor McLaughlin, Counselor Kaplowitz. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes seven zero.
Please call Resolution two eleven.
Resolution two eleven would accept a donation of a park bench by Linda Stark in memory of her husband.
Counselor McLaughlin, Counselor Kaplowitz. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.[1441.23] Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 212.
Resolution 212 would accept a donation of a park bench by Teresa Bearness in memory of Edward Bearness.
Counselor Walker. Counselor Van Buren. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 213.
Resolution 213 would accept a donation of a park bench by Art McManus in memory of George and Leona McManus and Robert and Mary McManus.
Counselor Enright. Counselor Kaplowitz. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 214.
Resolution 214 would accept a monetary donation by Pathfinder Bank for the services of Create Studios LLC.
Counselor Van Buren. Counselor Kaplowitz. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 215.
Resolution 215 would grant a variance of the noise ordinance to Mr. and Mrs. Robert McGrath, proprietors of Spencer's Alley located at 124 West Second Street during the months of May through September.
Counselor Todd. Second. Counselor Walker. Is there any discussion? Counselor Enright.
I just want to say, this has been a long time coming around. I couldn't even remember. There's got to be at least four times that Mr. McGrath has come forward, and I'm glad to see that, for the most part, they will be able to work some of the details out. I think this is what it's all about. Less government is better, and I think I was glad to see the neighbors get involved, and I always want to see more people get involved in this process and understand it better. So, with that, I just want to thank both parties that have showed up and talked, Mr. McGrath for, you know, for changing his ordinance and trying to be compatible with what the neighbors want, and apparently something must be working because on graduation weekend, I hear we had no complaints. So, I just want to thank everybody for going through with all this.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 216.
Resolution 216 would approve proposed Local Law Number 5 of the year 2015, a local law amending Local Law Number 2 of the year 2003, now Chapter 44, reapportionment of the Code of the City of Oswego, New York with respect to the official map and specific boundaries of city wards.
Counselor Van Buren. Counselor Enright. Any discussions? Counselor Kaplowitz.
Your Honor, thank you. I appreciate the fact that we're going to get through this today, but I do understand that we have had informal opinion offered by our city attorney regarding the question of whether or not we could, even after reapportionment, give consideration to reducing the size of the council from seven to five, and my understanding and reading for opinion is that we do have that ability to do that in addition to the reapportionment. It's a different process, and I think it's one that I would certainly like to see us pursue this year, and understanding that it would be probably two years out after the, after this year's election, two years from that point, but I'd like to just go on record as supporting anything we can do to reduce the council down to five.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Todd.
I'd like to also second that thought process and ask that the mayor reconvene that committee to start looking at that. I know this is something that a number of us have been asking for for a few years now, and I think we should look at it and at least let that committee that's put forward at least make a recommendation on what they recommend, so the ultimate decision comes down to them, but give them the opportunity to explore. Gay's making me vote for this.
I'm not looking at it. Any other comments? Yes, Counselor?
Well, truthfully, the way this came about, I wasn't too happy. I talked to you about it before. The problem is, the way I found out about it, I basically read it in the paper. No one informed the council. It never came in front of us. No one said nothing, and it was all hearsay I heard. No one came to us and said, "Yeah, we're going to do this," and I wasn't really happy with it. And then, on the other note on this, the way I'm looking at it, now if we redistrict now, it's going to cost us money through the state, through the county. They're going to pay for this to redistrict. A lot of time, and the timing of this is very bad, because what comes out in a week?
Are they going to have this done for the local, you know, local elections? I believe the commissioners already started working on it.
I'm just not happy with it the way it came about, and it's going to cost people money, and then if we want to reduce the council, that's going to cost more money. Why do we keep spending everybody's money on this? Do it one time, one time only.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Todd.
The city attorney and I had a rather lengthy conversation about this. If I'm not mistaken, the way it was explained to me, and I agree with you, I wasn't thrilled about it either, even though I've talked about this, just because of the time we've spent with them, I believe both Board of Elections commissioners have assured us that this will be ready to go by June 2nd, so for anybody who's running, I don't believe it'll impact you, and I believe the changes were minimal to begin with. However, I'll give the city attorney, I don't believe we have any way around this. We'll have to do it by law. I get it, but I don't believe we've got any way around it. I talked to the State Board of Elections. I think it was something that we should have done four years ago, and they didn't do it, and they caught up to us and we don't have any way around it now.
Is there a mandate on doing this to the attorney?
Yes. Yes. Our term says that the board of officers will be exempt for their tenure after the time that they've been in the department. However, if the data is not available in the first year that we have been in the department, the term expires by May 31st in the third odd number year after the minute. Third odd number year, January 16th, 2016, the odds are that it will be canceled, and so therefore, the temporary quarters will be deleted on January 31st, 2016. If the exception numbers are outside the allowable parameters or force, and if the orders are outside of the allowable parameters, third or the top, or the bottom, so that reason, the mayor, the people, the commission, the council, the administration, and the board of commissioners, and the very first, very last, well, the top six, because of the minimum five blocks, and the fourth, the fourth ward, and the parking lot, the third ward, the third ward, the number, the number, the number, the number, the number, the number.
Any other comments, questions? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
No.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
No.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 5-2.
Please call Resolution 217.
Resolution 217 would authorize submission of the Home Rule Request authorizing the enactment of legislation to extend the additional sales and compensating use tax of 1 percent.
Counselor Van Buren. Counselor Barlow. Any questions, comments? Counselor Barlow.
Just for members of the public, this is an annual piece of legislation that Assemblyman Barclay puts through the State Assembly and that State Senator Patty Ritchie puts through the Senate, and it just has to be passed at the local level to allow us to collect our portion of the sales tax.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 218.
Resolution 218 would authorize the mayor to execute an extension of the lease agreement with Wayne's Drugs for the rental, the parking lot located at West Second and Keuga Street.
Counselor Barlow. Counselor Kaplowitz. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 6-0 with one abstention.
Please call Resolution 219.
Resolution 219 would authorize the City Chamberlain to complete budget amendments to the Enterprise Fund Counteracted Services Account in relation to the generator rental at East Side Wastewater Treatment Plant.
Counselor McLaughlin. Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 224.
Resolution 220 would authorize a purchasing agent to seek bids to scrap junk vehicles.
Counselor Enright. Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 221.
Resolution 221 would authorize the purchasing agent to seek bids for the demolition of a dangerous building located at 59 Liberty Street.
Counselor Enright. Counselor Barlow. Any discussion? Counselor Walker.
Can we make that emergency and have the mayor send it out and wave the bids?
I believe, if we call another emergency situation, we don't have to go through a formal bidding process. Usually, the purchasing agent would try to get some calls, usually that's done, or somebody collects it.
Well, to me, I think it's kind of an emergency. We get this done. This coast is falling down.
Yes, Counselor Kaplowitz.
I believe this resolution addresses that and says that Section 83, Day 6, which holds the city, which we address the emergency cases, now therefore be resolved, and I believe what we're doing here is simply authorizing this to go ahead. Mike probably made three phone calls ready to get a number of listeners to sign on the mayor that we're down. Not a big problem.
Okay, absolutely. Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 222.
Resolution 222 would approve a sale of surplus equipment by Auctions International.
Counselor Van Buren. Counselor McLaughlin. Any discussions? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 223.
Resolution 223 would approve a new fee schedule for ambulance services.
Counselor Enright. Counselor Kaplowitz. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 224.
Resolution 224 would approve attendance at various courses to be held in Syracuse, New York at the request of Susan Gentile Deary, City Assessor.
Counselor Van Buren. Counselor Barlow. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 225.
Resolution 225 would approve attendance at the basic course of police officers' training beginning June 15, 2015, in Oneida, New York at the request of Toriel Decker, Police Chief.
Counselor Kaplowitz. Counselor Barlow. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 226.
Resolution 226 is a motion to remove Resolution Number 197 dated May 11th, 2015, from the table.
Counselor Van Buren. Counselor Kaplowitz. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 227.
Resolution 227 would authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Grossman St. Moore, LLC certified public accountant.
Counselor Van Buren. Counselor McLaughlin. Any discussion? Counselor Kaplowitz.
Your Honor, the only thing that I would mention is that we do have the new Community Development Director here this evening, and I thought maybe you might want to introduce him.
Absolutely. Mr. Rudzik, Justin Rudzik, would you please stand?
This is our new Community Development Director. I can say that Justin comes highly recommended with vast experience in community development, so we're really looking forward to growing our city with Justin, and welcome aboard, Justin. We've been working together very closely. In fact, Justin and I will be out at the USDA seminar tomorrow at the college discussing how we can look into housing and business opportunities, so we're off to a good start. Any other questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 228.
Resolution 228 would waive the rules of the committee council to present Resolutions Number 229 through 231 from the floor without committee consideration.
Counselor Van Buren. Second. Counselor McLaughlin. Please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0.
Please call Resolution 229.
Resolution 229 would authorize the mayor to sign the 2015 agreement with the Greater Oswego Fulton Chamber of Commerce.
Counselor Kaplowitz. Counselor Van Buren. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz. Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 6-0 with one abstention.
Please call Resolution 230.
Resolution 230 would approve hands-on Oswego community cleanup event to be held Saturday, May 30th, 2015.
Counselor Todd. Counselor Van Buren. Any discussion? Counselor Barlow.
Back to that last resolution, I abstain because I have a direct conflict interest with the...
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Van Buren.
I'd actually like to make an amendment. Speaking with the people running the event, they'd like to add a rate date for Saturday, June 6th. The community cleanup event is not on Saturday, May 30th, 2015, but the winning date is Saturday, June 6th.
Any other comments?
We need a...
Oh, we didn't have to. Okay. Counselor Walker.
We're voting on the amendment. Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
The amendment passes 7-0.
Now we need to vote on the resolution as amended. Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 7-0 as amended.
Resolution 231.
Resolution 231 would authorize the City Chamberlain to complete a budget adjustment to fund a code enforcement clerk position.
Counselor Enright. Counselor Van Buren. Discussion? Counselor Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be voting no on this resolution, just because I think it's really hard to raise taxes in this city when you say that a lot of the money in the budget is dedicated to personnel, and then you continue to hire more people to the city payroll. I'm also voting no because I believe that the code enforcement process of the city is somewhat not prioritized correctly, and I'm convinced that we're doing it in a more expensive fashion than we were before, to see that we need to continue to authorize overtime or comp time, and we need to continue to hire more people. Just to me, it's a red flag that maybe we need to look at the process as a whole and consider alternative methods in how to conduct code enforcement.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Counselor Van Buren.
As far as the resolution, the department that is intended to be stopped yet, the rest of the office, and taking steps towards restructuring that department, a clerk is going to be a necessary position. My thought process behind that was a method that cities in Syracuse use as a permit clerk. They use that to handle all of their permits and kind of streamline that into a one-stop system, and I believe that's going to be a better system for continuity moving forward, so I'll be supporting this.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Yes, Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yeah, I'd also be supporting this, Your Honor, and I think it's become very aware to all of us that we certainly need some sort of a point position within the code office, and I'm pleased that it's part-time basis, and it really is, I think, an opportunity for us to make this system work a lot better than it has been working, and I certainly appreciate what Counselor Barlow is saying with respect to the code office, but I think in the long run, no matter what we may do, whether it's maintaining it within the fire department or reestablishing a code office, a clerk's position is going to be necessary regardless, and I do believe it's a step forward in providing a better service to those folks that are, I think, somewhat burdened by the system.
Thank you, sir. Any other... Yes, Counselor Enright.
Yeah, I also am going to be supporting this. I feel that hiring a part-time clerk is definitely a step in the right direction. I would even be in favor of the full-time clerk, knowing what I do about all of the paperwork that I can back up, and we need to get the people that we're paying the big money to out in the field and doing the job instead of behind a desk and finding all the paperwork. I think it's so important that we have this clerk, and I feel that this clerk will actually be saving us money in the long run.
Counselor? Any other comments? Counselor McLaughlin.
I'm going to be voting no against this, just simply because I think the whole system needs to be redesigned.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
No.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
No.
Counselor Barlow.
No.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 4-3.
Is there any other comments? Counselor Van Buren.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
No.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
No.
Counselor Barlow.
No.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 4-3.
Is there any other comments? Counselor Van Buren.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
No.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
No.
Counselor Barlow.
No.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The resolution passes 4-3.
Is there any other comments? Counselor Van Buren.
Counselor Kaplowitz.
Yes.
Counselor Enright.
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Barlow.
Yes.
Counselor Van Buren.
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
4-3.